I looked into it years ago.
Looks like seven thirty today.
Probably twenty, about thirty years ago. Two, three hundred.
This is seven twenty-six on my computer. It's like seven twenty-six, four more minutes.
Good evening, Washington courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Time for our first regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Johnson will offer an invocation and Mr. Schultz will lead us in the pledge. And if you're able, we would appreciate it.
Dear heavenly father, thank you for our friends and neighbors gathered here tonight. Thank you for the many blessings you have given us. And thank you for the opportunity to do good works in your name. And as we endeavor to do those to good works, please grant us the wisdom, courage, and empathy required to succeed on your behalf. But above all, please remind us that it is your will and not our own which shall be done. In your name we pray, amen.
Admit to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Hawke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Call. Christman.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we excuse Ms. Call. Second. Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Yes, Sylvia's grandfather passed away and she has a big funeral, so give her our condolences. Uh, we have two sets of minutes, a special council meeting on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Does anybody see any problems with that meeting?
Well, I kinda liked it.
You liked it because it was so short?
Well, and they called me Mister Mister.
Oh, Mister Mister, okay. Well, Mister Mister, does somebody wanna make a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes, including the Mister Mister.
Second. Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And we have the regular council meeting from September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Anything there? Now, do we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion that we accept those as printed.
Second. Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Abstain.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing concerning the rezoning of seven twenty-six Rawling Street, uh, two point one nine acres from C F, community facility, to R two, two-family residential district. Uh, this time, um, do we have some people who would like to speak to that? No one? Okay. Then I will declare that closed. Uh, next, any communication, Mister Denon?
None.
We have two, uh, council committee reports, starting with economic strategies and cooperation. Mr. Schultz started out, Mr. Johnson came in. You wanna read half and Caleb?
You wanna read it, Caleb? Sure, I'll go first.
You go right ahead, okay.
Go ahead.
The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth at five P M. Mr. Steve Schultz presided and those in attendance were Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, and Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with the, with industrial development. The administration advised the committee of open projects. Number two, the administration noted that October was manufacturing month. Mrs. Baker advised that local school students would be touring businesses and industrial industries within the community. Number three, the committee benefited from an update on B R E meetings. Mrs. Baker noted that there are fifty-eight open projects. Number four, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the downtown area. Mrs. Baker noted an upcoming new business for the love of Western and the relocation of Ikimono Martial Arts Studio on South Main. Number five, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Number six, the administration advised the committee of the positive work of small nation. Mrs. Baker noted discussions continued, noted discussions continued with the small nation organization. The committee noted that preliminary renderings would be reviewed on October se- second. Number seven, the administration noted recent community projects and events. Mrs. Baker advised of upcoming events such as the house, housing meeting held at the Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber of Alt-outing. Mrs. Baker noted the event had been moved to October eleventh. Respectfully submitted, uh, Mr. Steve Schultz, vice chairperson, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting chair, uh, reporting secretary, and I guess myself as well.
Yes. Mr. Johnson is chair of that committee, but he came in a little late, so Mr. Schultz started it, that's why. That's why that's there.
That's why I let him read it.
Anyway, uh, discussion about that? Someone wanna make a motion to accept?
Second. Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We also have the minutes from finance and personnel, Mr. Christman.
Thank you. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Ron Sockman, finance director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report of the statement of cash for the month ending August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Number two, the committee benefited from a report on investments of the City of Washington courthouse. Number three, the administration reviewed the jet dis- disbursement calendar. Number four, the committee recommended that the legislation be brought to council for the administration to enter into a joint self-insurance agreement with Central Ohio Health Care Consortium. Number five, the committee benefited from a review of the health care cost summary report. The committee noted the premium rate of three point five percent. I'm assuming that's increased, I forget. Number six, the committee benefited from a review of the U M R PACE Plan Activity and Checkpoint Evaluation Report. Number seven, the administration advised the committee of the V S P Vision Renewal Agreement. Administration noted that the decrease in renewal rates. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the V S P Vision Renewal Agreement. Number eight, the administration explained an option to use the E A P Employee Assistance Program that offers legal advice for city employees. The committee recommended the administration begin company reviews for possible services. Number nine, the committee noted that the B W C Drug Safety Reporting had been completed. Number ten, the committee noted that the administration would be exploring the possibility of an H R A Health Retirement Account Option. Number eleven, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council to enter into the agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Clinton slash Market Street Project. Number twelve, Mr. Denon extended his appreciation of those who participated with the Scarecrow Festival. Number thirteen, the administration noted the demo grant priority confirmation. Number fourteen, the administration advised the committee that contact had been made by the Natural Afro-American Museum and Cultural Center about the placement of a historic marker in Washington courthouse to honor Brigadier General Charles Young for the Colonial Young Ride in nineteen eighteen to the Washington, to Washington courthouse. The committee recommended discussions proceed. Respect, actually, she respectfully submitted by me and Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Very good, a lot to read there, Mister Christman.
It shouldn't been Ted, he usually gets the long ones.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, since I was not there.
Yes, sir.
Do I abstain from, uh, my approval when they call the names?
That's up to you.
I can still accept it.
I've always thought you, you could do that even for a regular meeting, but.
It's my understanding that when you are voting on minutes, you are merely voting that you accept the minutes as true presented to you, not that you were there and know personally of the events.
For a guy that wasn't there, he sure showed up a lot, 'cause Jim is on this page and this page.
I've always thought that, Jim, but I, you could approve it.
I have, that brings up a question, then, does that mean that you're just accepting that that's what was said? Or are you accepting what's in the minutes as going forward?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's a good answer.
Do you have any information that what is in there is not true?
Okay, so, so that's all I would agree to, if I agreed to the minute?
Pretty much, yeah, you're saying, yes, I agree to this because I don't have any information with, that this is not true.
But in the past, when there's things that are discussed and, and we sound like we made a decision, then it's almost like we put it into action.
True.
So.
But it's really put into action at the committee meet. So all you're doing is agreeing that it was put into action at the committee.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I disagree with something that's in there, then I vote no?
Good.
Yeah.
You're good. But again, it's not whether you agree, it's whether you agree that that, those things were said at that meeting. It's not whether you agree with a certain part of it.
I'm gonna give you that opportunity, Ted. I don't want to, uh, approve the minutes as read and as printed, except for Mr. Jim Blair not being there.
Okay, with that, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Kelly, roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Well, I'm gonna abstain because Mister Hawke, if I wasn't there, I don't know for sure if it's really accurate, so I'm gonna abstain. There you go.
Thanks. Lynch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, that's fine too, Jim.
You have the rights.
All right, city managers report, Mr. D.
It's the time of year where we talk about the census.
I thought that was every ten years.
Well, we look at the census. But it is every ten years. And I know everyone will be incredibly excited, there are twelve additional slots. Uh, what we look at is U S Census Quick Facts because it's a nice way to look at, uh, all information from Washington courthouse and surrounding communities. Uh, it's not a comparison, that's not the purpose of this, it's just interestingly that we talk about the community and think about it conceptually. That's the July one, twenty twenty-three population estimate from the U S Census Quick Facts. They periodically do a population estimate in between censuses annually. I would guess that that is a little bit low for us. Usually, we outperform the population estimates by the time you get to the actual census. But what's more important here is when you think about Chillicothe, Washington courthouse, Circleville, Wilmington, and Hillsborough is the relative size of the community. Uh, compared to Washington courthouse, Chillicothe is enormous. And I think sometimes we forget that. And then even more telling, uh, that's land area in square miles of Ross County, and in a moment, we'll look at their population. Geographically, Ross is huge, and Highland, Pickaway, then Clinton and Fayette County relatively small in terms of their physical area. And that's the population by county. Notice how much larger Ross County is than everybody else. Pickaway has grown significantly as Columbus has crept south. Uh, Highland not only is geographically larger, but the population is substantially larger. The same thing, Clinton's population is substantially larger than Fayette County. 'Cause here, um, we're actually in terms of population, a little bit bigger than Wilmington. But in Clinton County, you not only have Wilmington, but you got a number of those other smaller communities located within that county, and that's what the huge difference is there. And every graph, I've included a little table, too. This one is separate simply because I couldn't get it to fit nicely on that slide with the way everything else was. But that's the county relative to its population. So that first column is the population of Fayette County and then Washington courthouse, fourteen thousand four hundred and twelve. Clinton County, you're at forty-nine, twelve thousand six hundred. And that gives you an idea of relatively how the communities relate to, uh, the counties that they reside in. The percent female of the population, which really the differentiation on the scale is relatively small. Uh, as you would expect, it's, it's a half to a little bit more than a half simply because ladies tend to live longer than men. So you usually end up with slightly more than half the population being female. Percent of population eighteen years or younger. Every community tends to think of itself as older than it is. You know, Washington courthouse, you got, uh, more than twenty-three percent, almost twenty-four percent are under the age eighteen, uh, which is a little bit larger than those other communities around us, which I've always found interesting. And that stayed consistently true for quite a while.
That's the city, not the county, right?
Right, that is, this is Washington courthouse.
Okay. It's interesting.
Percent of population sixty-five years and older, it's relatively smaller for us in those comparable communities. Now, between Circleville, uh, and Wilmington, it's only basically a percentage difference. But compared to like a Hillsborough, that's a noticeable difference. The number of households, that tracks pretty much with the population and what you would expect. Household size is a little bit bigger in Washington courthouse. Persons per household, a little bit larger in Washington courthouse, Chillicothe. Uh, again, the scale there kinda distorts the, the difference because, you know, Washington courthouse, you're at two point three seven, and for example, Hillsborough, you're at two point one eight. Owner occupied housing rate, uh, that has changed a little bit for us over the past couple of years. You bought a lot more rental housing online than traditionally you used to have. Living in same house a year ago, which you can look at this as a positive or negative, it does show a lot of stability. Uh, you have Chillicothe followed by Washington courthouse. And we went through all that to look at this. Median household income is a measure at which half of the households have an income above that level and half below. So you're looking at what the midpoint is in each community. Circleville would have the, the highest median income, and then it would be followed by us and then Chillicothe, uh, which I think surprises some people, quite honestly. Uh, that, that is what that, that makeup looks like. And in particular, also, the next thing we're gonna look at is per capita income. Looking at it, measuring it that way, we've improved significantly over the years. Now, this is just the communities, not the counties. Per capita income is very simple, you take the total income, you divide it by the population, get your number. And there, you have Chillicothe in the lead. Which being a larger community with some more industrial options than we have being on a river, uh, that makes sense. Then Washington courthouse and, uh, Circleville and the other communities following behind that, which that has been very satisfying to watch that improve over the years. Percent of persons in poverty. Washington courthouse at twenty percent, uh, the highest you have there is, what is it, Circleville at twenty-three percent? That's an interesting thing to consider also. And we're not trying to compare communities, it's just information. Persons without health insurance, that has always been relatively low in Washington courthouse. That has stayed consistent over the years, which is a positive. Percent of households with broadband internet subscription, that has moved steadily up for us. And some of that, I think, is the, the fiber optic options that people have available to them now, although the installation of that infrastructure was a philosophy. But that, that has steadily improved. Now, the households with the computer, the census provides that information. I'm probably gonna end up dropping this one next time around because so many people use a device that you wouldn't necessarily call a computer. But that information is there, historically, we've looked at it in the past, and that's why that, that slide is there. But I am a little bit skeptical of it, like, I'm a bit skeptical about the population estimate. Percent of the population sixteen years plus in the civilian labor force is the highest in Washington courthouse. And I include this slide because occasionally, uh, oh. Let's give something. Households with computers, Chillicothe. And percent of population sixteen. Yes. Uh, highest in Washington courthouse, sorry for that. That, uh, and I put the wrong table in there, that's why I'm confused. We'll talk about this other communities and why they're, they're selected, but that's always been relatively high in Washington courthouse and always something I've been proud of. And there wasn't any place to stick the table there that worked particularly well. But that's Washington courthouse at a little, slightly over sixty percent, and you can see Wilmington's relatively close, very close. But it's a little bit lower in those other communities. And sometimes, you know, you can hear people talk about, nobody goes to work anymore, and that's really just not true. That's the number of females in the workforce, which is about the same in all of the communities. It varies a little bit, but not tremendously, which makes sense. Total retail sales. Now, that's much higher in Chillicothe, one because it's bigger and remember how much bigger Ross County was in terms of population and geography. Hillsborough, smaller than Washington courthouse, but retail sales relatively high because it's in a large county. And if you think about it geographically, a large part of that population doesn't have as many, not as easy as options of places to go. Wilmington's probably influenced a bit by the college. Uh, total retail sales per capita, which is just another way to look at it. Again, that's Hillsborough, smaller community, but it's serving a larger population around it in Highland County. Total lodging and food service sales, Chillicothe enormously higher, that makes sense. Wilmington with the college there, that makes sense, uh, but relatively similar. High school graduate or higher persons twenty-five years or older, consistently, we have not done well here. We have consistently been, uh, that group of communities, the lowest on the list. Bachelor's degree or higher person of the population twenty-five years or older, uh, there's a little bit of variation there. Uh, we'll talk about that with a group of other communities. And you know, you do have an issue relatively to your, your size, the number of folks that you you really need with a bachelor's degree or higher in order for the community to function. Veterans, I've included this slide simply because it is interesting, Chillicothe's bigger, so it makes sense. Uh, Circleville's relatively close to the same tide than Wilmington is, and you've got a few more veterans there, which I always consider that interesting. Next slide is very complicated. Basically, it tells you that none of those communities are particularly racially diverse. It's going through Asian, Hispanic, Latino, African American or Black, uh, American Indian or Alaskan Native, and two or more races. Language, other than English spoken at home, always been much higher in Wilmington than Washington courthouse or even Chillicothe. That number for Washington courthouse really hasn't changed that much over the years. It covers close to a percent and a half, uh, of folks that I've identified in the, the census that typically at home, they speak a language other than English. Foreign born persons, that has stayed relatively consistent over time also. We're gonna look at another group of communities relative to Washington courthouse. They were selected because of the characteristics of the population being relatively close. Now, um, I tried to avoid cherry picking, and what I did leave off the list was if you were, oh, heavily a suburban community, Xenia is to an extent. I left those off the list and tried to come up. Now, the population size has varied, Xenia's much larger than Washington courthouse. But it's the characteristics of the population in the sense of the number of people under eighteen, the number of people sixty-five years and older being relatively similar. There, Xenia is much larger, um, than Washington courthouse, and, uh, DeSeyris, Gagian, and Logan are all just a little bit smaller, Logan considerably smaller. Eighteen years of age, under eighteen years of age, uh, Logan is the highest, uh, followed by Washington courthouse. Interestingly, I would have thought that Xenia would have been higher in that category than us just because of its relative proximity to date. than us, just because of its relative proximity to Dayton. Sixty-five years of age and older, again, the scale, look at that, you've got to think that the scale that you're measuring is fairly tight. I mean, it only goes between forty-two percent and fifty-four percent. But there, you know, you're relatively similar to DeCuyrus. Xenia is a little bit higher. Sixteen years or older in the labor force, again, Washington Courthouse, much higher, which is a positive. Now, health insurance there, we are relatively, again, towards a lower value, which in that case is a positive. High school graduate or higher, again, we're at the bottom of the list. Bachelor's degree or higher, notice how similar that is to Gagian and Logan, and we're a little bit less than DeCuyrus. You know, the size of the community, there's only going to be so many jobs or professions where you really need that. It makes sense that it's higher in Xenia because it's just larger. Median income, there, you're in the second slot. Xenia would be first, which given its proximity to Dayton, that kind of makes sense. DeCuyrus, Gagian, and Logan are all relatively old. That is the per capita income, which in that group, actually, we're in the first slot, which that really surprised me. And again, I tried to avoid cherry picking, but I didn't pick communities that obviously are, you know, like I wouldn't have picked Delaware, because that's a whole different neighborhood. But that, you know, we do this so that we challenge all folks' assumptions about the community that they live in, because sometimes we can assume that, you know, all of us are sixty-five years or older, and council members actually live in a distinct minority compared to the number of younger people in the community. And I look at this every September, late September or late October. Any questions?
That's very interesting.
And you've got hard copies if you want to take them with you.
I definitely want them.
A couple of pleasant items. The Colonel Young marker. On Fayette Street, over by the police department, there's that landscape area next to where the police department parks. The historical marker, that would be a nice location. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. And Colonel Young, what else did anyone ask? Oh, wanted to know, earlier in the day, we were out at McDonald's of all places, celebrating the fact that it has been fifty years that McDonald's has been in the community, and just wanted to stress again, it was a pleasure to recognize McDonald's and in particular, Nick Epifano, who has been a very dedicated, very generous member of this community. And that's all story I got.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, good.
Somebody told me today that we don't have city limit signs, is that true?
We can look at it, they're in the right place nowadays.
I know we change a lot, but...
I can think of two off the top of my head, but we can look at that if you want us to more clearly denote that.
I think it'd be good that we did have, so people know when they're in town and out.
All right.
Anything else from Mr. Dennen?
Mr. Sorkin's not here. Mr. Attorney?
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
We have no local residents signed up, so we will move to legislation. And first, that is, which has been previously introduced, starting with amended ordinance number thirty-four, twenty twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move we put ordinance, amended ordinance thirty-four, twenty twenty-four on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance amending codified ordinance one fifty-six point one one three, section E, political signs and/or posters.
Then we have new legislation in writing, starting with ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance thirty-five, twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-five dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance rezoning seven twenty-six Rawling Street, parcel two one one dash zero zero eight dash one dash zero zero dash zero nine three dash zero zero, two point one nine acres from CF Community Facilities District to R two, two family residential district.
Resolution number R thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I move we place resolution number R thirty-one, twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-one dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or the city service director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required to Clinton and Market Street improvements, phase two.
Resolution number R thirty-two, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I move we place resolution number R thirty-two, twenty twenty-four on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, what exactly is that committing? What do they do?
Mr. Dennen.
The major important thing is that it looks at your public works applications and it prioritizes them, and it assists with that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-two dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution confirming Mr. Joseph J. Dennen, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Lance Heath to the District Fifteen Public Works Integrating Committee for a term concluding December, I'm sorry, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Resolution number R thirty-three, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll make a motion to put resolution number R thirty-three, twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dennen, city manager, to enter into an agreement amending and restating the city's membership with Central Ohio Healthcare Consortium for healthcare insurance.
Thank you. Okay, miscellaneous. Mr. Hawk, what do you have this evening?
Life is good. Till then.
Mr. Christman?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and have a nice evening. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
Well, I'll do the same. I want to thank everybody for coming, and I'm glad we got through the scarecrow festival great, and it was good weather and everything, so. And so far, we've been very, very fortunate to escape some of this severe weather that's been coming through the southern part of the country. So, but, and the other thing is, you know, as humans, to make an error is human. To blame it on someone else, now that's management. That's all I have to say.
Are you experienced at that?
Uh, Mr. Blair?
I would like to offer condolences to everybody that is involved in this terrible hurricane damage in Tennessee, Carolinas, and then prayers and thoughts go out to the people in Florida right now, as they're about ready to get slammed again down there. We have a lot to be thankful for. And I just would like to bring that up and let them know that as a city, we are concerned, and they have our prayer, our prayers. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. And Mr. Johnson.
Well, I got this impression from the last couple of census data reports that Mr. Dennen showed us, but this one continued the same trend and pattern, I think, that the data shows that we in Washington Courthouse have a very young, potentially very promising generation, people under the age of eighteen. And if they graduate from high school, and if we can show them that this community is attractive and has opportunities for them, we might be able to retain them rather than losing some of our best minds to other communities. So I really, really just would urge young people to consider that Washington Courthouse has opportunities for them. It's just highly important. We can't lose our best and brightest to other bigger cities and hope to grow and be better as a community. We'll just stagnate. So we really need to make sure that we're helping and nurturing young people realize their full potential in this community. And one person who does that a lot is Mr. Epifano. So I'm very grateful for him and for all of the good. I don't think I've even met Mr. Epifano, but I know of him, and I know that he does a lot of great things, a lot of good service to the young people in this community. So if we had more people like him, I think we could keep some more talented young people here in the city. Thank you.
Amen, Mr. Johnson. The thing that breaks my heart the most about that report is the number of graduates that we have. Got to do a better job. We're in the process of passing legislation about signs. I'm not going to get into a big discussion about that again, but that doesn't mean that I agree, even though I vote for it. For years and years and years, we had a sign ordinance that was perfect. You could put signs up forty-five days before and have them down three days after. It was wonderful, nobody said a word, nobody cared. It was great. Now we have to pass legislation saying you have stupid political signs up three hundred and sixty-five days a year if you want. Something is wrong in the world. The other thing I would mention is, for you people up here, if you haven't done the evaluations of our three people that we evaluate, we don't evaluate employees of the city except for three people. And it's important we do that. So if you haven't turned those in, I know that Mr. Wilson would love to have those tomorrow when he arrives so that he can compile them, and at our next meeting, we can go into executive session to discuss them. But if he doesn't have them, he can't compile them. So if you haven't turned them in, please do that, and tomorrow would be great. So please do that. With that, we'll listen to an adjournment.
I'll move for adjournment.
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned at about eight fifteen.